Let's call our council work session. Today is April 11th. Madam Clerk, do you read the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? If you're not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed. Today, we have an update on the Emerald Ash Bore. So, take it away.
Good afternoon. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. My main role here is to introduce our city forester because this has been his project primarily. But I want to thank the council for the support. This has been, I guess, an invasive species at its worst that's taken a pretty good financial toll already and continues to do so. But Todd Deerfield, our city forester, has done a good job of being proactive, started a new inventory system, which has been very helpful in battling this, I guess you would call it infestation. It's not really a disease. It's a bug. It's an infestation. And Todd just wants to update you on that because it is an expensive undertaking, but I think we're doing a good job of trying to keep up with it. So, Todd, with that, it's all yours.
Thanks, Paul. I'm not going to get into the history too much of this because I have addressed the council before on a lot of the history. But we did find the insect in Waterloo on January 25th of 2014 in the neighborhood north of East High and south of Gates Park. And at that time, we went into that area and removed all of the ash trees, which 90% of them were infested in that area. And we've, from that time, we've moved outward radially and removed, as if you want to look at your sheet that I handed, that Paul distributed there, we've removed 1,377 as of last week. Now, that's roughly, what, 700 a year, roughly? We've got 3,104 left. So, we started at about 18% of our tree population as being ash trees, and now we've got about 12% of our population in ash trees, which that 12% is the 3,104. We have gone into some of those parks in that infested area that I was talking about and removed, in some of the parks, every one of them. And we've, we are, I'll get to the planting here in a second, but we are doing some planting. And if this rate of hours continues on the removal, assuming we don't get any big windstorm or anything like that, we could be done with this in about four years. As far as a budget, we have been utilizing some CIP funding. Last year, we received $100,000, and that all went towards the removal of stumps. We are geared up with equipment that's very efficient in removing trees, thanks to all of you. And stump removal is a lot of labor and a lot of time, so we've been contracting that out and saving a lot of time for our removal operation. And I guess the way I've always looked at it, a stump's never killed anybody. So, that's kind of put aside. And we do stump removals twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. And as you'll see on tonight's agenda, we've received some bids for 522 stumps that we've accumulated over the winter months. We are absorbing all of the removal costs to date within our operation. That comes at not a financial cost, but a cost of not getting our systematic trimming done. We've divided the town up into 10 different zones. And before the Emerald Ash Bore, we went into every zone and either evaluated and trimmed or removed every tree in that zone. So, it's kind of on a 10-year cycle that we would be back to every tree in the city, which is a big deal for our insurance company and our liability. So, we've cut back on that a lot. We aren't getting as much trimming done, and we're doing more removals of ash trees. Chemical treatments has always been a big topic, and they've come a long ways since the Emerald Ash Bore was first discovered in the United States in 2002, and they've become pretty efficient. They do come at a cost as well. The going rate for chemical treatment is about $10 a diameter inch, and at that rate, you can get a two-year coverage. Now, there's all kinds of types of chemicals out there. Some give you a one-year coverage, some give you a two-year coverage. But basically, it's an insecticide that does not allow that insect to kill the tree because that insecticide is in that tree for up to a couple of seasons. So, for instance, if we were to treat the rest of our trees, the 31,000, or 3,100 trees, I'm sorry, it would, it would cost us, what? I've got that figure here somewhere, 620,000 roughly for two years of protection. That's an ongoing process because the Emerald Ash Bore is not going away. We've got, it would be 1.25 million in four years, 2.5 million in eight years. It would just be an ongoing expense for us. And with that said, we have decided to, to treat a few of the trees in our parks, some notable trees, and we've got about 30 of them that we are treating. And that doesn't mean we won't treat more as we go into these parks that we're doing some removals in. And we also allow the adjacent property owner on the street right-of-way trees to treat the tree in front of their property. There's a lot of ownership there. They maintain the grass there. Sometimes, they've planted that tree there. It could be a memorial tree for a family member. So, there's a lot of times, there's, you know, a lot of ownership in that tree, so we do allow them to treat that tree at their expense. And at this point, we've got about 70 of those property owners that are treating those trees. And again, we do not pay for that. It's the homeowner's expense, and it's an ongoing expense for them. Private ash trees, if you do go into that neighborhood between East High and Gates Park, you start looking in the private yards and stuff, there is a lot of dead trees, and they're ash trees. Our city code states that a property owner cannot maintain a hazardous tree. So, the way we're dealing with that is if we do get a complaint of a hazardous tree, then we work with code enforcement, and a dead tree, in our opinion, is a hazard because it will fail at some point. And we work with code enforcement, and they make sure that that person follows with our code and has that tree removed in a certain amount of time. And I guess normally, it has happened that way. They just take care of it. If they don't, then it goes to the judicial system. So, that's about all I know on that stuff. So, planting, we've been doing a lot of planting through grants in our parks that we've removed trees in. There is several contracts out for the spring to replant in some of those parks. We do not replace trees on the right-of-way. We encourage the adjacent property owner to, and we'll hold their hand through that process. You know, we'll help them pick out a tree, the location, that kind of thing. We just can't, we aren't available to fund it. That doesn't mean we wouldn't work with a neighborhood association or something like that and do a mass planting and maybe find a grant for something like that. But we aren't going to fund individual, or we're not set up to fund individual tree plantings at various residences. I guess with that said, you know, like Paul said, we look forward to your guys' continued support in keeping our equipment up to date. And we are looking for CIP funding again this year, which you guys will be going through here soon. I'm sure you guys got some questions or maybe not. I don't know.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Is the priority, the golf courses and the parks first before you do right-of-way, or is it just whatever is more safe?
What we've been, what we've been doing, Tom, is moving into areas that we know there's an infestation and doing parks, right-of-way, everything, golf course for that matter, everything in that area.
Okay.
I guess, in my opinion, an infested tree is a priority, not necessarily where it's But to put in perspective, if there's a tree out in the greenbelt that is infested, I'm not going to touch that until we're all done with the city. So, you know what?
Can we get a copy of those zones?
It's the sidewalk zone?
Oh, it is.
Okay, I see what you're saying, like the zones that are infested?
That, no, that you're working in, the 10-year plan.
Oh, the 10-year? It's the sidewalk zone? I can get that to you. The same as the engineers use for our sidewalk removals and repairs? I can get, or I've got a PDF that I can send you, though.
That'd be nice.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Tim. I heard you say, talking about the residential areas, and you've got the numbers listed for, looks like, the parks and that. Do you have any idea as far as the numbers out there in the residential areas at all?
I don't. I don't have any, any private numbers, and I honestly don't know how I would get that.
Okay. Well, I guess the reason that I'm asking that is because if there's a lot of them out there, and I'm hearing that, that is the homeowner's responsibility. So, if no one complains and there's just a dead tree there and code enforcement sees it, they're supposed to get with that residential person, let them know that they have a tree that is in bad shape. How does, or do you just wait for someone to report an unsafe tree?
It would be a combination of those. Whether I would see it or code enforcement would see it, or somebody would complain about it. If any of those happen, then we, you know, start following the protocol.
Mr. Mayor, anyone else?
So, Todd, the 3,104, that's the city trees that are currently left, correct?
Yeah, that would be golf course, park, and street right-of-way.
Okay. And do you have any kind of guess, man, of those 3,100, how many do you think you're going to end up saving?
I don't think, I don't think it would, it would not go over 100. But right now, we're at 30.
Okay.
And there's a few more that are not in an area that's infested yet, that we haven't started treating, that I think are deserving of it. They're notable trees that are worth saving. But we definitely wouldn't go over 100.
Because there are some communities that are attempting to save their ash trees.
There is. There's some communities that are trying to save 100% of them. And I've researched a lot of communities. I talked to a lot of city foresters. Two of the, in my opinion, two of the best forestry operations in the Midwest is Milwaukee and Minneapolis. And both of them are doing a lot of treating. Minneapolis has 40,000 ash trees, roughly. They're doing treating as more of a staging, though. They're treating them to remove them at their time, you know, when they're able to do it. So, they'll treat so many trees and then, you know, remove so many each year until they're all, all 40,000 are gone. That way, they don't have to go and rush out and remove all of the infested ones or all the dead ones. It's just a way of prolonging that process. So, they, they don't want to treat them forever, but they also don't want all 40,000, all 40,000 to be dead in three years and have to remove them all. I, I think, assuming we don't get any big storm or anything, which, you know, it can happen, we can absorb these removals and save the taxpayers a lot of money.
So, isn't there a theory, though, in some communities that you save trees, whatever the number is, whether it's 10% or 75%, for some period of time? And as that period of time goes by, the bores go on because there's, there's no longer any source of food for them. So, once they're gone, I mean, so the idea of talking about Minneapolis where they have to take out all 40,000, I mean, that's not that theory.
Correct. It's not that theory.
Right.
And that theory is a theory. It was found in Detroit in 2002. They're not gone yet. They're still there. The insect kills basically everything above ground, but the roots are going to re-sprout, you know, maybe not in an urban setting where the stump is removed and such in people's yards and things. But in the little woodsy areas around the 1100-acre greenbelt or, you know, the outlaying areas, those, those trees are going to re-sprout from the, from the roots, and those insects are going to continue to feed on that. Now, it won't be in the same population numbers as when the infestation has all of that food material to eat, but it will be significant enough that they're still going to be here. And we will still have that problem, and you would still have to treat your trees to not be infested.
Because when you're, you know, doing your calculation on the cost to treat the tree, you're also factoring in the cost to remove the tree, the cost to plant a new tree, and the cost of the loss of water runoff, air, clarification, all that stuff.
Right.
While you've lost that big tree to go to a sapling. Correct?
Those are huge benefits, and those, those costs, they aren't, they aren't seen. You know, they're not, they're important and they're not seen, but I guess I'm looking more at the hard dollars, too. And, you know, that, that's what it's going to come down to, is, you know, what are you guys going to allow us to, to manage this with? And I personally think that we can, and based on what other communities are doing, too, and what the Detroit, Michigan area where it first started, and they've been through it, I think what we're doing is going to be the best for the taxpayer.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrissey.
Todd. I just wanted to add one thing to that. And I went to the Tree City USA banquet last week and sat with the city forester from West Des Moines, and they're trying to save all their trees. And I applaud them for that. They have way fewer trees than we do. They have a very narrow tree lawn, and so it's a little more attainable for them. But one thing that we haven't talked about is the environmental concerns. And when you start treating thousands of trees year after year with a systemic insecticide that goes through that tree, it can affect pollinators. When that tree blooms, attracts pollinators, and that can kill bees and so forth. So, there's, there's a whole other side on that. And the Center for Energy and Environment at UNI has come down on the side of, we think it's overall better for the environment to limit as much as you can the pesticide introduced. That's just another factor that, you know, it's hard to say who's right and who's wrong because you're right. You have all the other factors with the benefits of the big trees compared to the small saplings. But I just wanted to add that. Was there, Pat, did you have a question?
I was wondering, two things. First was, do you know with the street trees, the number of those that are in each neighborhood association? I mean, is, can that be figured out, Todd? That's, that's the first thing. And then the second thing, when we passed the budget, part of that budget included a transfer from road use tax funds over for, it sounded like some tree, street. Is that part of, can that money be used for this, or is that earmarked for something particular, other, other than the Ash Bore tree removal?
A lot of that general fund money that was utilized, or I guess moved over and road use money put in, that's for our normal operating budget. So, it is being used for our normal operations, which would include now ash removals, but it's not any of the, any of the contracting or anything. It's not extra money. It's just, instead of using general fund money, we're using road use money.
Okay.
It's not extra. But it is used for...
But some of this, some of that will go towards this on the street right-of-way?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
By the neighborhood association, is there some way to figure that out, Todd?
There could be. I haven't done it as of yet, but there certainly could be. Does somebody have a, is anybody aware, is there a, like a map of where all of the neighborhood associations, neighborhood associations are delineated?
Eric Schrader's shaking his head yes. So, I take it there is.
I'll talk with Eric.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Todd, I'm assuming that the quarantine is still on for the state of Iowa?
It is.
Are other, are other states quarantined as well, and does it really matter as long as it's spreading throughout the country anyway?
There are a lot of states that are quarantined. It does matter. We can, we can bring firewood, logs, anything like that to an adjacent quarantine state. But if you go like into Nebraska, you're commending a, I don't know what level of crime it would be, but you're committing a crime. You can't bring firewood to Missouri or Nebraska or South Dakota at this time because of Iowa being quarantined.
I see.
A lot of the Midwestern states have that quarantine, and it's a, it's a federal quarantine. It's like one big blob. And then there's little sections, like in Colorado, and little sections in Missouri that are infested now that have smaller quarantines by county.
I see.
It was a county thing in Iowa a couple of years ago, and then when we became infested, it became a statewide because it just started spreading everywhere.
Sure. Very good. Anyone else? Well, Todd, thank you for all the information today.
Okay. And if any of you guys got any more questions, don't hesitate to contact me. Be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Just any questions or discussion? If you're not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have four requests today. If you, somebody would like to take one at a time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Lynn.
I move to approve the request from Chief of Fire Services for authorization to appoint two fire recruits from the civil service list. Should I do number two, too?
If you like.
I move to approve a request from the Chief of Fire Services for authorization to create a civil service list and promote one to the position of battalion chief.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the first two requests. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to those?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, the two positions, those are, those are included in the number that are allowed right under the current budget. And then the battalion chief, that is replacing a current position, a retirement, correct?
Battalion Chief Fire Services. That's correct. So, if you give us permission tonight to hire two, that'll get us to our approved full-time equivalents of 109.5. So, we had four retirements, and we reduced two positions for this upcoming year. So, that'll allow us to fill those positions. And for the battalion chief, that's to start the process and to hire one or promote one. We have two retirements upcoming. One will be in fiscal year '17. So, it'll take us probably six to eight months to get a list in place, and then, and then we'll promote when one of our battalion chiefs leave. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Pat?
Anyone else?
So, those two on item number one, are those, are those two of the two positions that are currently vacant that we're part of the other discussion at the budget about not backfilling? Or are those, what do those two put us at number-wise?
That would put us at our authorized number of 109.5, full-time equivalents. So, in this, in this fiscal year, we're approved to 11 and a half. So, obviously, we need to get prepared for reduction of two for next year. Otherwise, I'd be here to request to hire four.
But so, are those two the two that, for the alternative budget proposal, would not have been filled? Is that an accurate assessment?
I'm not sure, Mr. Schmidt. The alternative, I'm not...
Which was to not hire?
Right.
Any of the open positions?
Right.
Okay. Well, if that's who you're referring to, that would, that would be accurate. Because we, we had three open positions when we went into budget negotiation. We had a young man quit and move on, so that gave us another opening. So, there was four going into the original discussions. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? If you're not, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No on one, yes on two.
Mr. Welper.
Yes. Those motions passed. Three and four.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from the Director of Safety Services for authorization to start the process to create a civil service list for the position of clerk one, Rutgers Clerk, and appoint two individuals from the list to fill vacant positions.
Did you want to take number four also?
Sure. And also, a request from the Community Planning and Development Director to begin the civil service process and promote two to the position of planner two in the Planning and Zoning Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on these two requests. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, on number four, that's two, you're only filling, one's a current position, correct? Noel. And is the other one a new position? Because the documents you sent us only shows one vacancy.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So, we have a vacant planner two position now, so we'll be filling that. We're recommending to do it internally with an internal posting to the city employees. A second position would go from a, potentially from a planner one to a planner two. So, there'd be a promotion there to try and work toward the overall goal of having an economic development coordinator within the overall structure of the department. Overall, the department would be going up one-half position because the proposal presented what to council for the budget was that we'd be eliminating our part-time position and replacing that with a full-time position. And of course, that would be paid from TIF, so there's a little impact to the general fund. This is the first step and probably two steps to fill that half a position to a full position.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Noel.
Mr. Jones.
So, this, looking at, at the, at the process of these two position, planner two positions, I mean, you've gone through, your department really looked at how you're going to use these, right? I mean, you're not just looking at how you've done things in the past, but you're looking at trying to do something new. Can you talk to us a little about, about that?
That is correct. I think the budget meeting, we had worksheets that showed all the internal duties that we are taxed with today in terms of ordinance requirements for the planning commission, city council, subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance and all that, and then going ahead through other duties that we have for property management, transportation duties and all that, really dividing those up and looking at the responsibilities... Really dividing those up and looking at the responsibilities for each position, we believe this is the best way to go ahead and move forward, dividing up those positions and switching those so that we do have one staff person dedicated as much as we can to getting to 100% economic development.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
I've got a question on number three.
Go ahead.
So on, on number three, as we're looking at these clerk positions for Records Clerk, in this case, have we gone through and evaluated, do we need those positions, or do we need them in the same way that they're used today? You know, hopefully, when we're looking at positions like this, we're doing kind of a department evaluation as to, do we still need them? Or still need them in the capacity as they exist today?
We've absolutely done that. On every position, we sit down and have a discussion. On every position there is, the department heads have to explain the justification of why it's needed. We talk about alternative ways to get the work done, whether it's productive or not, and whether it's most efficient. These two positions are pretty critical. There's also going to be another vacant position later in the next fiscal year, so there's going to be more opportunity to look at that as we go. But right now, this department is so short-staffed, there really was no alternative other than to get bodies in there. But we will have more of an opportunity with the next one, because hopefully, we won't be down to it in a long time.
So where are we in the process of these clerks? Do we have a list, or are we assembling a list?
Starting a list.
And that means people taking exams and that whole process?
Correct.
Okay.
We do have a temp, one temp helping right now because we just can't function with two.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes on three. On four, I support the promotion to the vacant position, but no on the other Planner Two position.
Can't do that.
Does that make sense?
It does, but you can't do that.
Yeah.
Well, then, why'd you put it on the agenda this way then? So it's all or nothing?
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes on three, no on four.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes. Motion adjourned.
Second. I didn't know if you, did you already vote?
Yes, I voted first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Then that motion passes. The motion's passed. And you have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Boards and commissions to order, will the clerk please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Mayor Hart's recommendation for the following appointments. A is Carrie Deesberg, Human Rights Commission, expiration date 4/4/2019, and that is a new appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that. Is there any discussion? This is the item that we brought back from last week. She lives outside of the area, but she works in. So the question was, can she still serve?
Yes, and did consult the city attorney with that, and he did check it and looked at it, and it was not specific. Other boards and commissions stated specifically that it had to be a city resident. This one just basically said that you had to be a member of the community. So from what the city attorney said was, is it should be able to be an appointment for that individual. That was the word that I got.
Member of the community. What, what's the definition of that, though?
There was no definition. It was just vague, and the way that he said it was, is because it's not specific. And if you remember correctly, Director Funchess made the comment that this young lady actu, well, Director Funchess, if you would please...
Sure, sure. No, thank you. Abraham Funchess, Executive Director, Waterloo Commission on Human Rights. No, Councilman Amos, I appreciate what you're saying. Yeah, it is vague. It is open. And currently, there are other commissions right now that are engaging other people who live outside of the Waterloo city limits. So based on the green light that we've received tentatively from the lawyer, we believe that we are in good standing. But also, we just want to reemphasize, of course, that Carrie Deesberg, she commutes back and forth right now from her point of destination to the city of Waterloo. Her main constituency base is, in fact, Waterloo. She's an expert in domestic violence, as she helps victims of domestic violence find transitional housing, and this is consistent with some of our strategies as a Waterloo Human Rights Commission. So we welcome her to come on board, and if and when she can be appointed, we want you to know a little bit about the diversity, the makeup of the commission. We would have five females, four males, one disabled, four blacks, five whites, one gay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lind.
If you look at the ordinance, which is 5064, 812011, when we passed it, it says the commission shall consist of representative of the community.
Correct. So we were talking about the definition of community, and according to Mr. Amos, speaking with Dave Zellerfer, since it is vague and open, there is no definition of, in the community. She definitely works within the community, and she helps people within the community, in our community, and she commutes outside the community where she lives.
Can we get a written legal opinion?
I don't know. Is that necessary, Susie?
I'm sure Dave would put it in writing.
So what do we do?
We can ask him.
Table this again? Or, or pass it with...
With all due respect.
Mr. Funchess.
Yeah, with all due respect. If you need a written statement, can we still provide the written statement? Based on what we already know, though, that this is already happening with other commissions in the city, that the, the lawyer has already communicated to both me and Councilman Amos, and says that this is sufficiently vague enough where we can provide our own interpretation and appreciate that the community encompasses where she lives as well. Again, she works within the city of Waterloo. Her constituency base is Waterloo. She brings in expertise to the commission that I think is extremely valuable in light of our strategies, and we would like to proceed, please, with all due respect.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we do set a precedent. You know, we, we encourage members of the community to participate. This person is not a member of the community. I think it sets a wrong precedent for the council.
Well, I don't think we've defined what member of the community actually means. She's here, she's serving residents of Waterloo, and so that's where the vagueness comes in, is that it's not fully defined of what that actually means.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I remember correctly, the last time it was, we needed the opinion of the city attorney.
Correct.
We acquired that opinion from the city attorney. Now I'm hearing we want it in writing. You know, I heard this with my own ears. So for me, there shouldn't be any reason, with the city attorney's blessing, I'll say, he was the one who told us this. Now, putting it in writing is not going to change it, as far as I know.
Right. He can still put it in writing.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs, if you, I mean, you're, you're a voting member of this committee, and you can vote no if you think it's setting the wrong kind of precedence.
Well, of course, Mr. Chairman, I realize that, but do you realize the attorney provided a very vague response, just as vague as when we sent the request down to him, just as a vague response back to us, did not forward us in any way. So going back to the fact that we would like to have this person be a member of the community.
Okay. Noted.
So, so for me, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand what Councilman Jacobs is saying, but for me, I heard it with my own ears. And vague, whatever, and it may be vague for a reason, simply because of the fact that when you talk about individuals within this community volunteering, stepping forward, it doesn't always happen. And for me, what I'm hearing, we have an individual who is willing to serve, who is willing to benefit our community. So I see no reason to hold this vote up, to be honest with you.
And we can get a, a written statement from the attorney as well, post, right?
Agreed.
May I just say one more thing? I, I just wanted to suggest that the precedent, I think, has already been set. There are already commissions and boards that engage other folks who live with outside of the Waterloo city limits.
Yeah, and that, well, maybe, I respect that, but for me, trying to do the right thing as a council member for the city of Waterloo, we have to be for that same respect to be able to vote in a way we think is proper for the city, and we do encourage members of the city to participate.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor of approval of Mayor Hart's recommendation, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Same sign? All right. With that recommendation, we'll move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Amos?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Let's call the Finance Committee to order. Madam clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Get to my agenda, sorry. And we've got approval of agenda in minutes as of April 4th, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda in the minutes. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. We have three travel requests.
Three travel requests tonight. First one, Lieutenant Ferguson to attend fire alarm system testing inspections, fire alarm plan review, Minneapolis. May 3rd through the 6th, not to exceed $828. Lieutenant Ferguson to attend two-day sprinkler system plan review, National Fire Sprinkler Association, Lockport, Illinois. May 10th through the 12th, amount not to exceed $530. And Todd Henrich and Joel Shepherd, building maintenance, continuing education, Iowa State Electrical License, Cedar Rapids. May 2nd through the 3rd, not to exceed $1198.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the three travel requests. Is there any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Pre-oths.
Pre-oths. We have clerk's office at $58,180.80 for costs associated with the 2015 Waterloo City and runoff election. Leisure services, $3,370 plus $450 shipping for one granular surface trail conditioner. P&amp;Z for ARC GIS software maintenance and ARC pad maintenance agreement. Police, $4,000 for four additional shield wear RMS licenses. Sewer, $12,539.80 plus $431.36 shipping for three pole camera add-on SD recording device. Four rear view camera add-on for transporters and accessories for sewer TV inspections. Sewer, $5,118 plus $235 shipping for automatic sampler and cable assembly for sampling at UV building.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Now, I'll make a motion to approve the budget line item amendments, which are filed in city clerk's office, and this week, the bill payment is $1,402,370.12. That's 1,402,370.12.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Second.
We need a motion to approve the budget.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the bill's payment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got ahead of myself there.
Excellent.
Good evening. This is April 11th, 2016. It is on.
Apparently, go speak louder.
How's this? Okay. Today is April 11th, 2016 of the Waterloo City Council. I'm Councilman Ron Welper, filling in for Mayor Clark, uh, Mayor Hart, excuse me. Old habits hard to break. Mayor Hart's in Washington. He should be back tomorrow afternoon. So, with that, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here. If you would, please, join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance will be led by David Jones, ward and ward councilperson.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Make a motion to approve the agenda and also the minutes of the April 4th regular session, as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Tonight, we have a proclamation in regards to Crime Victims' Rights Week, and we have a Laura Bruce here. And friends, let's bring them all up. Obviously, my mic is not working, so we're going to use this, okay? City of Waterloo proclamation. Iowans were the victims of more than 140,000 crimes each year, and the crimes can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services, including victims with disabilities, young victims of color, deaf, and hard-of-hearing victims, LGBTQ victims, tribal victims, elder victims, victims with mental illness, immigrant victims, teen victims, victims with limited English proficiency, and others. Whereas victims of repeat victimization, who fail to receive supportive services, are at a greater risk for long-term consequences of crime and early intervention. The service that support empower the victims provides a pathway to recovery from crime and abuse. Whereas, the victim services community in Iowa has worked for decades to create criminal justice in community environments for victims that are safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas, providing quality victim services in all aspects of the criminal justice system can help rebuild the trust and restore hope of victims and survivors, as well as their communities. And whereas, the National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10th through the 16th, 2016, is an opportune time to commit in ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas, the Iowa DOC Victim Advisory Council and the Iowa Organization of Victim Assistance and their supporting services are hereby de... or, excuse me, dedicate, dedicated to serving victims, building trust and restoring hope for justice and healing. Now, therefore, I, Quinn Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, hereby claim the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and to express our sincere gratitude to those who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime, so that they may find relevant assistance, support, and justice and peace. In witness thereof, I hereby describe my name and cause the seal of the City of Waterloo to be affixed to this 11th day of April, 2016.
Thank you so much. I am here on behalf of the Cedar Valley Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, and we have put together, I think, a really amazing event this year. It'll be on Wednesday from 10:00 to noon at the Waterloo Women's Center for Change at 1515 Lafayette Street. And just another thing that we're really excited about due to a grant, we have a couple of billboards that are hidden through the downtown area that will also are just bringing awareness to crime victims across Black Hawk County and Iowa.
Would you like to pass the microphone?
And I really appreciate it that you guys were all able to be here tonight. It gives us, you know, people can see that we really do have a coalition, and we are working really hard within our community to assist crime victims everywhere. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Mr. Schmidt.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that's items number 1A through item number four.
And make the...
Mr. Mayor?
Bills.
Oh, the city clerk just informed me that you girls don't have to stay if you choose not to, unless you want a lesson in civil... Okay, very good, very good. We have a motion on the consent agenda?
I haven't gotten a second.
I'll second.
That needed to include the bills, didn't it, I think?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It does need to include the bills of $1,402,370.12.
Second.
I would also request that we handle item 1B3 separately to obtain an opinion from the city attorney on the topic of residency.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, which includes the bills, but we are pulling Kerry Deesburg out for a separate vote. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp?
Yes.
I have a question on 1B, 1A, and B. Are those, is that fire marshal training, are those two things? Is that... What that is?
The entourage director of safety, I don't believe they're specifically fire marshal trained, but they certainly help in the codes that we need to adhere to when we're approving these items.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll take up the appointment of Kerry Deesburg.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Kerry Deesburg to the Human Rights Board of Commission, as recommended by Mayor Hart.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this. There is discussion, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp?
Mr. Lam.
And again, I'll bring up the ordinance 5064, which says, "The commission shall consist of a representative of the community." And as I understand it, this person lives in Cedar Rapids or Marion or someplace.
Mr. Zellifer, you oppose?
The... I guess I need these, don't I? There are a number of commissions that we have in the city, and each one has a different specification to it. Some do require members of the commissions to be residents of the city of Waterloo, and some, I go on to say that three can be, like, the Cultural Arts Commission, you need to be a resident of the city, except three may be Black Hawk County residents. The Airport Commission, we need residents of the city, except two can be residents of Black Hawk County or any other county within the state. With regard to the Human Rights Commission, it's silent, doesn't say anything about residency requirements. Now, if you're going to interpret statutes such as this, you would say that since we have eight, let's say, 10 commissions or a dozen, that we've specifically said yes or no on residency to, and then one is silent, you have to infer that there is no residency requirement for the Human Rights Commission. If you want one, I suggest you put it in, but right now, my opinion would be that there is not a residency within the city of Waterloo for the Human Rights Commission.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, Mr.?
One of the requests at the hearing, or was, is that the city attorney put that in writing. Is that possible to get that in writing so that there is no question, I mean, we're hearing, but...
Yeah, I would have, except I found out about it at 5:22 today, so, yes, when my secretary arrives first thing in the morning, I'll put together a memo and give all of you want. Anybody else who wants one, go get it. But, you know, with local ordinances like this, if you're going to put restrictions on boards and commissions and things like that, if you want commissions to be restricted, then put the restriction in it, then there's no questions. And since there isn't one, we can't enforce one.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Anyone else?
Yeah, so, Mr. Zellifer has read it into the record, so, in fact, it has been placed in writing for this meeting. Obviously, he can follow up with another memo as well.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, can you roll call on this, please, as regards to appointment of Kerry Deesburg to the Human Rights Commission?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I do just want to say that this has absolutely nothing to do with the nominee, but I do believe philosophically that the, these people need to be a member of the community, and by that, I mean the Cedar Valley. I like Cedar Rapids people, but I know we've got other applicants for this position. They're local folks, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
No, Mr. Welper.
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. You have been appointed, Kerry. Thank you. Thank you for saying yes.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry? Or she just did.
Question? Mr. Mayor? Can the chair vote?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a councilman.
I didn't know when you're acting as the mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, I'm still a councilman. Absolutely. So, anyway, that passes. So, thank you for that.
Public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, on issuance of a quitclaim deed for lot 10, block 4, of Lake Side addition to BBP Real Estate Holdings LLC for $1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this issue. Is, any questions or comment on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Now, declare the hearing open. Does anyone wish to discuss for or against the issue? Second time.
Oh, there's nothing on file.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's nothing on file.
Phil, 526 Home Park Boulevard. My question is, is who is it? You got a title, but I'd like to know who, who the people are that we're doing this for. Who's going to be the recipient of our tax dollars? Thank you.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. BBP Real Estate Holdings LLC is owned by Ben Stroh.
Ben Stroh.
Ben Stroh.
Good evening. Bruce Tuckey, Cazzer, 500 Sycamore Street. I have a question about, we sell these properties for a dollar. What's our, who's checking to make sure we get a decent return on our investment? Do we get more than a dollar's worth of return, or what?
Did you understand this question?
I got it.
I'm sorry.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. In a standard sale of property for a dollar, we normally would have a development agreement would have a minimum taxable value so that we can calculate back new taxable value being created to the city of Waterloo for our benefit. In this particular instance, this is more of a clearing of a title. We do not believe that we own this property. There's some question if it was owned by the real estate or owned by the city of Waterloo in the title action, and so we're basically taking this to help remove a cloud of title on the project and let them continue to move ahead and clean up the property.
Thank you.
Ask again. Does anyone else wish to speak in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor?
Second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on closing the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, adopt a resolution authorizing said conveyance to BBP Real Estate Holdings LLC for $1 and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this resolution. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, that motion passes. Item number three.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, which is the 2016 stump removal project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
And we'll declare this hearing open. Are there any comments on file in regards to this, Madam Clerk? There are none. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the matter? A second time.
All right, um...
Bruce?
Again, Bruce Tuckey, Cazzer, 500 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. Okay, now, when you guys remove the stumps, a lot of times, there's an empty space there. So, are you having plans to replace anything with, in the hole that's left?
Paul could address that, Bruce.
Paul Huddington, Labor Services Director. Are you asking, do we plant new trees, or are you asking, do we restore the soil and so forth? The soil is restored, trees are not planted, simply because we don't have enough funding to replace all of the trees. And as a lot of people know, we're taking down a lot more trees than normal because of them are lashable or outbreak. We do work with people and encourage them to plant trees, and we'll help them pick a species and, and put the right location. Incidentally, that same location is never right, because there's been a tree there, there's, it's just not the best growing environment, so it should be moved a little bit one way or another. But, yeah, we work with people, but we don't have the funding to replace them all.
May I please also have a bigger time after the meeting?
Sure. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
And receive and file.
And receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on closing the hearing. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this. Questions? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I move to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids, infer to Director of Leisure Services for review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
All right, there were three bids. The bid estimate was $104,000. The first bid was from Schaefer Tree &amp; Lawn of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid security was in the form of a check for $5,445.50, 5,445.50. The bid amount was for $108,890,108,890.00. The second bid was from Twin City Tree Service of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid security was also in the form of a check for $5,600, 5,600.00. Their bid amount was $112,000, 112,000.00. And Wilson... sanitary sewer out from underneath the foundation of the building, so that one, even though we're vacating these easements right now, we're coming right back here in the same meeting and establishing a new easement for the public sanitary sewer to come through the site, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
So, from your perspective, you're ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
That motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on suspending the rules, any questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Right.
On this one, uh, discussing this with our planning zoning director, we should go ahead and suspend the rules because there's no impact to any neighboring facilities, um, the only impact here is to the facility itself, so, it would proceed this project to move along faster.
Good, thank you, anyone else?
I have the same.
Same.
Mr. Mayor, so, so the question I would have would be, as in the past, on a situation like this, is timeliness an issue?
There's no reason to not proceed with all three readings.
Okay, but my question is, to the developers, is timeliness an issue?
Uh, Jim Ellis, again with JDE Engineering, yes, um, they'd like to begin as quickly as possible, um, plans are in the, the works for the actual expansion of the building, and the civil design is completed, um, the only thing that's left is actually going through the design review board, because we're inside the 218 highway design corridor and getting the design review board's approval, and then we'll be pulling a permit and beginning construction, so they'd like to move ahead as quickly as possible, um, I also mentioned that these easements, because Bauer Built Tire has bought the property to the west, it is, uh, that is correct in saying that the only property owner involved in these are, in this issue, is the Bauer Built Tire Company itself, um, also, uh, this is item four, but underneath item fifteen later in the agenda, we're actually re-establishing a sanitary sewer easement, relocating the sanitary sewer out from underneath the foundation of the building, so that one, even though we're vacating these easements right now, we're coming right back here in the same meeting and establishing a new easement for the public sanitary sewer to come through the site, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
So, from your perspective, you're ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids, and refer to Director of Leisure Services for review.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this motion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, that motion passes.
All right, we have two bids, the first bid is from Professional Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa, the bid security was in the form of a check for $3,000, 3,000, 000, 000, there are five options in this project, option A, their bid was $40.75, 4, 8.75, option B was $51.50, 5, 1.50, option C is $41.55, 4, 1.55, option D was not filled in, it was at zero, and option E was $59.75, 5, 9.75, B&amp;B Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa, also had a, the bid security in the form of a check for $3,000, 3, 000, 000, option A was $47.70, 4, 7.70, option B was $57.70, 5, 7.70, option C is $39.25, 3, 9.25, option D is $1,600, 1, 600, 000, and option E is $57.70, 5, 7.70.
Okay, thank you. Item number six.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the Dollar General number 7136 tobacco violation for first offense.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this motion, discussion, hearing not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, that motion passes. We'll declare this hearing open, anyone in the, uh, any comments on file?
None.
Anyone in the council chambers that wish to speak for or against the matter? The second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on closing the hearing, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a, make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of order assessing civil penalty of $300 and instruct mayor and city clerk to execute order assessing penalty for first violation.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this resolution, questions, hearing not, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Number seven.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Uh...
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing that is an ordinance approving the request by signs and designs on behalf of Prime RE LLC for a site plan amendment to allow off-premise signage to be located at 2027 Crossroads Boulevard to advertise future retail businesses at 2039 Crossroads Boulevard on a 339 square foot sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying that motion passes. I'll now declare this hearing open. Is any comments on file?
There were none.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the issue? For second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments even though there weren't any, and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Any comments or questions regards to this?
Mr. Welper, could we have just a little high-level overview on this for the audience?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Essentially what they're looking for is putting together kind of a joint commercial sign at the, uh, on the Sandmarten side of the former Bonanza site, which is now Hurricane and the additional businesses there. And they're tying that with the former Toys R Us building to allow signage to go on, for both those sites to go on that Sandmarten frontage area. It's a little bit outside of how the ordinance normally reads for signage, and we're working on some new wording on those for kind of shared commercial signs in a, in a larger commercial area like this, but it's going through the site plan amendment process for this purpose.
So is the issue the sharing or is the issue the size?
A little of both. So it's a little bit larger, but it's mainly the sharing that required some of the approval process.
And you haven't heard any negative comments about it or anything?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by the signs and designs on behalf of Prime RE LLC for a site plan amendment to allow off-premise signage to be located at 2027 Crossroads Boulevard and to advertise future retail businesses at 2039 Crossroads Boulevard on a 339 square foot sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this motion. Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on suspending the rules. Questions? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
No.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the second and third reading. Questions? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. If someone want to take some resolutions, you can take two or three if you wish.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Lind.
Should I take, uh, first three, four? Well, anyway, I'll start. I move to adopt a resolution approving the following resolutions. A resolution approving completion of project recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Peters Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, and release $7,366.39 retainer to Peters Construction in conjunction with Waterloo Center of Art Schuetz Room renovation. Number nine is a resolution approving acceptance of improvements of the Audubon Heights Fourth Edition performed by Dave Schmidt Construction Company, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, who is the contractor, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond from Skogman Construction Company of Iowa, who is the developer. Ten is a resolution approving acceptance of improvements of Audubon Heights Fifth Edition performed by Dave Schmidt Construction Company, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, who is the contractor, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond from Skogman Construction Company of Iowa, who is developer. And number eleven is a resolution approving award of contract to R&amp;D Lawn Care LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for option A, $200 per occurrence, option B, $250 per occurrence, option C, $30 per man-hour, option D, $45 per acre, option E, $25 per man-hour, and approve the bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the 2016 lift stations and complaint mowing and complaint snow removals and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second on those four resolutions. Any questions or comment on any of those? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I, Mr. Delivo, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. Did you wish to speak?
I thought you recognized me every day. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Forestville, 172500 Road. I was just wondering about the complaint mowing. Is that the same price as last year? Going to use the same notification for landlords and so on? And was the landlord association notified of this?
Can I answer that? Do you know, Dave?
Forrest, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll get it for you. Want to give me a call in the morning?
I can do that.
All righty.
I'm sorry, now where'd we leave off here?
I was doing roll call.
Tom. With Tom.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Okay, those four pass. What about somebody, K-12 and 13?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a request by Steve Trosky on the behalf of BCS Properties LLC for the preliminary plat of Village West subdivision, a six-lot commercial subdivision located east of 1844 West Ridgeway Avenue. And number thirteen, a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11-3-3D application procedure for a request for the final plat of Village West subdivision. Should I do number fourteen-two as well? Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, no, let's, let's just do those two for now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on these two resolutions. Is any discussion or questions in regards to those? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So did we, just for the record, did the developers and the neighbors have their meeting and some, come to some kind of resolution? Can somebody confirm that for the folks at home?
Good evening. Steve Trosky, CJ Engineers. Yes, we did meet with the neighborhood group last Wednesday. We had two meeting times available, one during the day and one after work hours, so we had seven residents attend that. And we did address all of their questions at the time, and I believe a recap email was sent out to the council with the documents that we provided at those meetings.
And the folks that had some concern from a commercial perspective, did they attend to, or have you talked to them?
Yes, we had a business owner from across the highway attend, and his main concern was floodwater. Currently, he's in the flood zone, and he was just interested to see how this project would impact, um, his property. He wasn't concerned about the view, um, and I think that we assured him that the area that we will be developing will be managed in a state-mandated and appropriate way.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, um, Noel? Is this the time to bring up some questions about this or wait until number eighteen? I mean, these are resolutions as opposed to the, um, ordinance.
I think you can certainly do it at either time. Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, you can certainly do it at either time. I mean, uh, the final reading for the rezoning is on later in the agenda, just because of the way the agenda is structured normally. If you approved the plats and later on you did not approve the zoning, they'd have some nice lots out there, but they wouldn't be able to develop them the way they wanted to. So I, I think you could discuss it now.
Okay.
Or later, it wouldn't matter, but it might be easier to do it now so they're aware of what you're concerned about.
Okay, um, thank you. Mr. Trosky, having talked to several of the neighbors out there, um, uh, one of the biggest concerns that I heard expressed was that at some point in time, uh, down the road, um, there's nothing here stopping you from building, um, eight-plex, twelve-plex, sixteen-plex, uh, buildings out there, which would look down upon the properties that are currently there on Jane Street. And I just, my question is, you don't plan to do that, do you?
No.
At any point in time?
That's not in the developers' plans.
Okay. Okay. And secondly, um, will the retention ponds, I, I see by, by the diagrams that you have there, the colorized versions, you have two different retention ponds, and one of them is going to be built at a later date, is that correct?
Yes. The project that you are discussing tonight, the water from that project will flow south and west to a long vertical detention pond. And the two ponds at either north corner of the property that you may have seen, that is for future development. So, um, the residential at the north end, the low-density residential at the north end, will flow to the northeast to that future pond, or to the northwest to that future pond. So all of the water from the proposed development will flow back towards the current driving range.
Okay. And, um, this will, you believe, take care of the runoff and the water that's coming down and, uh, from the cemetery and the other areas that seem to go down into this neighborhood and into the area that you're going to be developing?
So what we are doing is managing stormwater on the property that our client is developing. We will not be managing the stormwater on area that we are not disturbing. So I can't say that we will, um, completely mitigate all the water damage that may come onto their properties. This project stops approximately 250 feet south of that property line, um, between the properties, and so that 250-feet area, we are not building in that area, and we will not necessarily be managing, uh, topography there to deal with the stormwater runoff.
But, but as far as your development, you are managing that runoff?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the last thing, I just wanted to make sure that there's no plans at any point in time to build a roadway, uh, going to Highway 63?
We had thought about it, but that's in a low-lying area, and, um, it's kind of a bear to build over, so no. The map that you saw is the plan at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I just want to verify something. Eric, could you make sure I understand this correctly? The new standards for those, um, stormwater retention ponds used to be ten-year flood events, now it's a hundred-year flood events. Is that correct?
Very fortunate here. Yes, you're correct. Used to have to store the difference between a five-year storm and a ten, now it's a five-year and a hundred-year.
So it's substantially more, uh, retention of stormwater?
Yes.
Thank you.
Noel.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, just in response to Councilman Morrissey's question about the eight-plexes, I don't know how well everyone can see this map. The area being rezoned is this area hashed in the red here. The neighbors are up here, there's actually an area zoned, and it looks like it's probably about 240 feet. It's actually R2 CZ, so they would not be able to put anything other than a one- or two-family home in that R2 area unless they came back to the council and rezoned that. So the area right next to the houses, they could not put eight-plexes there, even if their intention, that they said they weren't going to and they wanted to secretly, I guess, they could not without rezoning it. This R4 area, which they're showing as green space, could have multifamily in it, it's currently zoned. Um, but again, as, as he noted, they're not working on that area at this time.
Okay, anyone else? Need a roll call vote on items 12 and 13?
Mr. Morrissey.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Came up to speak.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dryer.
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street. Again, I'll state, like I stated last week, I have no skin in this game, but I have friends that live on Jane. If I understood what I heard last week correctly, or maybe the week before, the present setback is 250 feet, however, the city actually has a 150-foot setback? Is that correct? They're, they're agreeing to a 250-foot, but, but what's zoning say? 150?
Can Noel can answer that? Maybe not?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, I'm not sure I understand the question. There's, there, there's a 250-foot setback from the houses to the area that they're developing right now.
Yes, but I thought I heard you say last week, I think it was, that the actual city zoning only requires 150-foot?
No, I mean, the largest city zoning setback we have for any kind of development's 50-foot.
Okay.
In this case, for, if you're looking at the zoning ordinance and looking at like a buffer area, um, to kind of have a difference between commercial and residential, it's usually between residential and industrial, uh, the maximum in the zoning ordinance is 40 feet for a green space buffer area. Um, so at 250 feet, they're more than adequate in terms of what the zoning ordinance says.
Agreed. And my thought is that even though this gentleman says no, if they do decide someday to put a road from their development to 63, then they could decide then to come back to the council in future years and develop a 100-foot-deep lot on the north side of that road. Again, 40-foot, 60-foot, whatever, uh, they're going to crowd that, that area where it comes off the cemetery, and actually, the cemetery water is more than not what's right now flooding them, and they're not going to have any, uh, abatement from that, because these people are only going to take care of what runs off of their property. Nothing's being addressed, even though they bought that property from the cemetery, nothing's being addressed about this now that's happening. And I think that should be something that should be in this agreement with them, that they will not, they never will, whatever, and something needs to be done, maybe by the city, if that's city property, uh, or whomever, to stop this flooding in their droges. Thank you.
This gentleman would like to speak.
My name is Frank Medina, and I live on 849 Jane Street.
Okay.
And, uh, I look at the ponds across over there by the Budweiser plant, and they're chup full right now. If these people put these ponds in, retention ponds, where they said they're going to do, uh, I believe they'll just be just as full as the one across the street. I, uh, right now, I'm paying flood insurance over there. What's going to happen next over there, I don't know. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to address that? Maybe not? No, I didn't see he was in the audience.
Adam Dater, CJ Engineers in Marshettown. Uh, I think what Steve was saying, I guess, two parts to this, uh, with the proposed development, we will obviously manage all the stormwater, uh, that, that is involved with our site. Um, in the future, um, he didn't mention, you know, we can't take care of all the runoff coming off the cemetery, because a lot of that does, uh, discharge just straight from cemetery property to the back of those property lines. Any stormwater that does pass through our development, though, we are required to manage that pass-through water. So that, that water will be taken care of, we will, um, and no detailed designs have been done, because obviously this is just a future development, that, that's just their concept. Uh, but that futures, that, that off-site stormwater will need to still be managed and passed through our system. That is part of, uh, some of the design criteria we go by.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Adam, uh, what happens to the water that's in the retention pond?
Uh, the retention pond serves as a temporary holding, I guess, chamber, if you will, and that water is just slowly discharged over a longer time period. Uh, so that, that will still be discharged to, you know, some kind of ultimate receding body water, such as a creek or a stream. Uh, but that water is held there in that pond for a certain period of time, and then discharged, uh, off the site in, in a managed capacity.
And not discharged towards Jane Street?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we need a roll call on number 12 and 13.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Yeah, those motions pass. Let's take number 14 by itself, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Lind.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the request by Steve Trosky on behalf of BCS Properties LLC for the final plat, a Village West subdivision, a six-lot commercial subdivision located east of 1844 West Ridgeway Avenue. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this resolution. I don't know if there's any questions in regards to this one or not. Hearing none, we need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
That motion passes. Number 15, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the request by Bauer Built Tires to dedicate a 20-foot-wide utility easement generally located west of 2086 Howard Avenue. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Questions? Discussion? Need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
The motion passes. Number 16.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances Title VIII, Chapter III, Article E, Section II, definitions by striking food service establishment, or FSE, and enacting in lieu thereof a new food service establishment, or FSE, definition.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on this request. Needed questions or discussion in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Lind.
I move to amend by inserting the phrase, "The scheduled inspection amount of $50 shall be waived if the FSE is in compliance," at the end of the motion.
I would second that.
I, I'm not sure you understand what this motion is possibly. John, could you explain that this is, this kind of, um, I'll just let him explain it.
John Lapointe, interim Waste Water Superintendent. This ordinance changes just on the definition, um, trying to clarify what is and isn't a food service establishment. There was already a resolution on fees and penalties passed earlier by this council.
So for, for example, if, you know, if a church is not being required to pay the $50 fee, unless they were found out that they are discharging a great deal of bad soils and greases, then they would also be included in the inspection. Then, then they would be charged the $50. But until they've proven that they're not in violation, they would not pay anything.
But this ordinance doesn't, this section of the ordinance that we're doing here has nothing to do with the fees. So we would need to amend a different ordinance, we would have to bring in new ordinance in if we wanted to change that section.
Yeah, it, again, the fee has nothing to do with it, it's just whether it would be included on the list if they are in violation of FOG.
So, can we vote on the amendment? I, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it, it doesn't fit here. This is just amending the sec, section two, which is just a list of words that has definitions.
Yes, I just want to amend the definitions to add this amendment. Can I do that?
We would, what you're proposing, we would want to put it in the fee portion of the ordinance. It wouldn't make any sense to put it in the definition portion of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, um, is this the time to rule the, um, amendment as not germane to the issue at hand?
I would, I would ask Welper to give, I think we would need to amend the, a different section of the code if that was what we wanted.
Yeah, I think there's also a problem with notice, uh, since this amendment you're proposing, uh, isn't on, and it doesn't deal with the section of the ordinance that we're dealing with. Uh, improper notice has been given to the public. This is just on the definition section, it has nothing to do with the penal section. So if we're going to amend that, we'd have to give proper notice, and we didn't. So I really don't think, as Mr. Morrissey said, your amendment is germane, and it's also, you know, not properly noticed to the public. So I'm afraid I'd have to put the gabaish on it.
Hearing none.
On the definish, uh, we, when we passed the first two readings of this ordinance, we had kind of two definitions, an FSE and a, if they're out of compliance, we'd call them an FSE. Now I noticed on the ordinance that's attached to my, um, meeting thing, we've dropped that second definition. So what, what are we, what are we voting on now? We just voting on the FSE definition only and not that second little definition? If you look at the attachment, it's different from the last two readings.
It shouldn't be, we don't touch it.
Yeah, I don't know what's changed, Tom.
Well, bring it up on your, um... Mr. Mayor, that is, uh, Mr. Lind is correct. For some reason, the second part of the definition got left off in the attachment.
Let me pull it up. Okay. So it's the attachment that's changed?
Yes, the second paragraph that had been there in the last two meetings that, in which we voted on this, is gone.
Okay, I'm going to go pull up the previous meeting.
So, the question is, are we dropping that second, um, definition, or?
I don't think so.
John Lapointe, interim Waste Water Superintendent. If there was a clerical error and something happened, and that ordinance isn't exactly the same wording as the last two readings of that ordinance, I recommend it be tabled till next week, and we fix it.
All right, I move to table then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this item on the agenda for one week.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing now, I hear a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Section 3A, Special Assessments for Improvements, and Section 5, Contractor's Bond of Chapter 2, Sidewalk Construction, Inspections and Repair of Title VII, Public Ways and Property in Section 7D, Billing, Certification to County of Chapter 2A, Cost of Improvements, Assessments of Title VII, Public Ways and Property in Their Entirety, and Enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 3A, Special Assessments for Improvements in Section 5, Contractor's Bond of Chapter 2, Sidewalk Construction, Inspections and Repair of Title VII, Public Ways and Property in Section 7D, Billing, Certification to County of Chapter 2A, Cost of Improvements, Assessments of Title VII, Public Ways and Property, and that is an ordinance amending Special Assessments for Improvements and Contractor's Bond for Sidewalk Construction, Inspections and Repair.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this ordinance amending. Any questions or discussion on this?
I would just ask that council suspend the rules on this one. The county is waiting for some assessments that we currently have to get this scheduled into their system because this law actually changed over a year ago and none of us were aware of it. So we're kind of in limbo trying to get these people their assessments done so they can start paying on them.
Do you want to explain this a little better? Is that an Eric thing or who'd want to, maybe for the audience, kind of let them know what this is about?
As State Clerk indicated, this state law changed about a year ago and none of us were aware of it and it just requires us to change the collection schedule and it's a little higher than it has been. But again, the collection schedule's been in place for, I think, about 27 years. So costs have certainly changed a lot too. So, but anyway, we have to meet the new minimums that the state's required for us on assessments and we do have some assessments there that are waiting to go out. So it'd be nice to have that schedule. Plus, we'll be sending notices out fairly soon on the next zone and it'd be nice to have the correct schedule for that, too.
So when you mentioned the rates go up, does that increase in rates goes to the city or to the state?
No, no, it's just the amount that can be collected each year. We have a schedule.
Oh, okay.
From zero to, say, $250 was collected the first year, $25001 to, I don't remember the number, it was about a seven-year schedule. We just have to change that now to meet the state code. You have to collect at least the first $500 in the first year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing now, I need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Your motion passes.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second on passage of this ordinance. Questions? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Okay.
That passes. Number 18.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Yes.
I move to receive, file and consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property, which is a request by Steve Trosky on behalf of VCS Properties LLC to rezone approximately 11.73 acres from R2 Multiple Resident District, R3 CZ, Conditional Zoning District, R4 Multiple Residence District, and C2 Commercial District to CP Planned Commercial District for the purpose of developing a commercial subdivision located east of 1844 West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Is there any discussion or questions in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor Protim, I have a question for Noel real quick. Noel, on this particular[995.88]
Residence District, and C2 Commercial District to CP Planned Commercial District for the purpose of developing a commercial subdivision located east of 1844 Ridge, West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Is there any discussion or questions in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, I have a question for Noel, real quick. Noel, on this particular rezoning request, some of the neighbors were concerned about, you know, bigger apartment complex, more dense housing, but we're eliminating R3 and R4 and replacing it with CP. And that, in other words, that kind of solves that problem in this 11 acres?
No, Anderson Committee Planning Development Director. One of the advantages of the CP is that the CP would require any specific building plans to come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for approval. So, you would see if they, if they decided to change from commercial lots to put in apartment buildings, that would be something that would have to be approved by the council.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I hear a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Your motion passes.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. We motion a second on this request. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim.
Mr. Lynn.
Noel, did we get a deed of dedication for this rezoners that come with a plat? In other words, I know you can do duplexes in an R1, but wasn't there talk about there we're gonna restrict that to certain lots, or some, there's some discussion?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, the action before today is to rezonate from A1, R1, and R3 to R1, so it's actually kind of defining this area a little bit more as, as a one- and two-family residential only. So, there was no opposition from the neighbors to this. Where the neighbors had some concerns was in the plating process where we would get a deed of dedication, and they are working out some, some details there between what the neighbors would like to see there and what the developer believes is marketable there to potentially delineate which lots will be, will be for single-family, which lots may be for one- or two-family type homes. So, that'll be worked out in the plating process, which should be going back to the Planning Commission in May.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, need a roll call, please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Your number 19 passes. I think we can take 20 and 21 together.
Mr. Welper?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 20 is a motion to approve change order number 19, authorizing a net increase of $22,185.20, which addresses the increase?
Or.
Or decrease of final quantities in conjunction with the Shawless Road Extension Contract Number 784, STP-U-8155, parentheses, 711-70-07, for a final contract amount of $3,000, excuse me, $3,150,397.87. And number 21 is requesting an exception to burning yard waste application by David Rusolo of Rusolo Brothers Farm to burn switchgrass along a creek with plowed fields on either side of the creek to get rid of dead vegetation, April through May, weather permitting, generally located near 5051 Eldora Court.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on these two items. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim.
Mr. Lynn.
I don't see, did Pat leave? We had a burning application before we turned down. Is, are we approving this one because it's farther away from buildings, or, I mean, I'm trying to figure out why we're approving this one, and last time we said, "No way, in town."
I, I think it's generally just, it's just get rid of grass. It's not burning brush or anything like that. It's just weed control.
Okay, so it's less of a fire.
Right. It's not a?
Yeah, it's done pretty much every year.
Large.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you. Well, that concludes our business for the week. It's time for oral presentations. Anybody wishes to address the mayor and council? I guess the mayor's not here.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I think it was about three weeks ago, I asked for a total for the change orders and for 2015. I talked to Mayor Hart, I think it was Friday, and he assured me, just going on record, assured me that we would get those figures, more than myself that want to know what the total figures was, so I'm just bringing it up again, so I'll be looking for the figures. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Will Frost, 501 Sycamore. Thank you, council.
Aye.
And I'm actually here, I made a note, actually taking inspiration from this gentleman's hat back here to make Waterloo great again. As a downtown resident and stakeholder, I'd like to express support for the traffic, the traffic safety grant that was approved by council concerning Fifth and Sixth Streets. As it sits, the grant application shows that this one-way system isn't safe, and it causes drivers to behave in a way that's not instinctive. A study should be done to review how returning these streets to two ways will benefit the city, both in terms of vehicular and pedestrian safety, as well as economic development. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive, Mayor, Pro Tim and Council. I called today and talked a little bit on Friday, a little bit today with our code enforcement officers, and great customer service, but I think their hands are tied. We spent a lot of time at this council talking about the doorway to the city on Highway 63 and all the changes we have to make. Well, let's think about doing something with the front door to the city on Highway 20. I'm tired of driving by the dog track and looking at the broken windows and the trash, and shocked to find out that the very first complaint was just logged last month. And I said, "Well, good, so we can maybe get some of those windows boarded up, get the trash picked up." Well, I heard the windows can't be boarded up because they're two stories tall, and that would be fairly expensive for the owner, and we're not sure who owns it, there's some dispute. So, if we can't make the dog track right on Highway 20, more people drive by that in a day than drive by Highway 63 North in a week. We can't make that property owner clean up what they do, then I guess I question our efforts to make any property owner follow our code. Our code enforcement, I think it's time, budget's over, to take a breath and say, "What do we want for these folks to do?" They primarily work on complaints made. That's akin to our fire department driving by a fire if it hasn't been called in yet. Additionally, if you drive around here, I think every violator in this city knows that code enforcement works hard, but they only work from 8:00 to 4:00. And you can park your cars on the street, or in your front yard, or your boat in your yard all weekend, every night, and you're never gonna get caught. So, there are cars every weekend. If you go to the leaf dump, there's no way to get to the leaf dump without going down Mitchell Avenue, and there are cars parked in the front of there, just on the grass. And they've never been sighted because it happens to be the weekend. So, perhaps we ought to get out of the box and think about code enforcement. Maybe one of the four people works second shift, and let's try and find these violators at a time when they really take the neighborhood down. So, again, I'd ask us to step hard against the dog track. Those windows need to be boarded up, and the property needs to be picked up, and if we can't make them, then I think we ought to drop our efforts totally, let the folks go, and let's just see what happens. Let it seek its own level. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Forrest Diliboo, 1725 Huntington Road. This week, I was asked a question by some residents that I couldn't answer. They wanted to know, two weeks ago, when we talked about the KWWL finalizing the agreement, it was told by staff that they were anxious to get it done because they were anxious to trade some property with someone or sell some property. I didn't quite catch the exact verbiage. They want to know if we are allowing them to sell the property we bought and gave to them, or if it's some other deal. They'd just like to know what that meant when it was stated.
I guess I'm unaware of anything that was said like that. Do you know anything, Noel, that?
It was Noel's statement.
Oh.
If he can remember.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. There's nothing that would prohibit them from selling the property in the agreement. I know they were working to work on some kind of a parking arrangement with the Department of Corrections, but otherwise that parking will be necessary for their, in meeting their parking needs for the office building. So, the only, the only option they'd have out there, I believe, would be working with the Department of Corrections, which is a buddy, neighbor to their northeast, and working with them on some kind of a parking arrangement type system.
So, they can sell or trade the property that we gave to them for development?
Yes, they'd still need to meet the parameters of what their site plan showed for the project and their taxable value, yes.
Okay, thank you. If they're not watching, I'll tell them.
Phil Kamir, 526 Old Park Boulevard, Waterloo. I posed this question before, and I'm gonna pose it again. You know, in your agenda, you use these, these titles of companies, LLC and all this stuff. I think you owe us some transparency of who these people are. Who is, who are these people? We've been made aware that there are certain individuals in this town that have a lot of different companies that go under LLC and other things, but they've been the recipient of TIF money, they've been the recipients of dollar purchases, and I think it would just be fair to the public that when you're dealing with this stuff, let's see who the people are, that are the recipient of our tax dollars and tax abatements and all that kind of stuff. I know there's a lot of people out there that like to buy a piece of property for a dollar, but it seems like we have a select few of people that just happen to know how to buy that property for a dollar, and just have to know where the TIF zones is and get the tax breaks, so I'd just like to have you put that in there when you put the LLCs in there. Who is LLC? What, who is it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bruce? Are you wishing to speak? Okay.
Gaby again. Christopher Kazir, 501 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I'm asking about who's in charge of the ordinance of no smoking on public property?
Who's in charge of no smoking on public property?
Enforcement the county.
There's a state division that is.
City clerk said state division would be in charge of that.
Because repeatedly, does Waterloo City own the transportation on Sycamore Street and Park?
Okay.
Am I, am I correct in assuming that they do?
I can get with you after the meeting, Bruce, and give you the phone number of where you file complaints for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?